All right, Chair Stewart. This is Anthony from HGP. I have all my devices rolling and the floor is yours.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, April 6th, and it is 6:00. We are holding this meeting via teleconference. Our chairperson, Jesse Barone, is not available, so I am taking charge tonight. And we have a quorum of commissioners. We'll start the meeting with a moment of silence. All right, thank you. And next up is Planning Commissioner Announcements. Are there any announcements? Jen, was that your hand? Yeah, go ahead, hon.
Okay, it's not an announcement, but more of a thank you. I attended the League of California Cities Training, and I'm just really appreciative of the fact that our city let us know that we were notified about it. I've heard otherwise from other commissioners and who were not so happy they weren't notified that there was this option and that our city was willing to provide that training for us. So I just wanted to extend my thank you to the City of Morro Bay for giving me the opportunity to have that training, so, thank you.
Wonderful. Glad that you did that. I'd love to chat with you about it sometime. Okay, anybody else? Let's see, checking on Joe, we're okay. All right, next up is public comment. Generally, this is comments on anything that's not on the agenda, but if you can't stay for the items that are on the agenda, you're welcome to comment now. I believe we have the links posted hopefully on the TV screen, and otherwise you can find them on the agenda on the city's website.
I can share them if you want, Susan.
Sure, why don't you share them?
Okay.
I'm seeing we have some people waiting in the list there. Anthony, are you seeing anybody with a hand up who wants to chat now?
Chair, I do not see any raised hands in the queue currently.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you.
Sure.
All right, moving on, do we have any presentations?
We do not.
Okay, then the next up would be our consent calendar. We have our current and advanced planning and processing list and the approval of minutes for the February 16th meeting. Do we have any comments, questions, or want to pull any of those items from the other commissioners? I have one, always my hand. One or two? I was curious about the Haslow Project. Planning approved on January 10th, building disapproved on February 2nd. Is there an issue, a concern, or is that just a process?
So they're in building plan check, and so we sent it to an outside plan check firm, which is Bureau Veritas, and they conducted that outside plan check review. And then we planned checked it internally as well through planning and building, planning building and fire, and then they received end engineering, and they received comments back from, I think, all sectors that they need to address. So it's pretty common, especially for a project that's got 35 units in it, that type of thing.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to see where that was at. And then I also noticed the Sonic Project's due date is coming up. They had an expiration date in April of 2021, so we heard anything from them.
This is Cindy's project. I guess I could let her give you the update.
Okay.
Hi, yes, their planning permit that was approved by the Planning Commission is due to expire this month, and they were notified by myself probably about two weeks ago, just as a courtesy email, that their permit was due to expire, and if they wanted to request another extension. They have exhausted all of their administrative extensions, which would be the director, and any future extensions would require the Planning Commission to approve that. I have not heard anything from them, so I'm not quite sure where they are at. The last status was that they were in building plan check, and they had gone through a couple of rounds of plan checks. So they've been quiet for, you know, a year now or more.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Just curious about where that was at, and I'm glad to hear it would come back to Planning Commission because so many changes in the area suggest we might have a different approach to the project at this point. I don't know, you know, but, okay, thank you. Okay, so then, do anybody else have any questions, or no? Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Thank you, Bill. And a second?
A second.
All right, I think we got a second from Joe and/or Jen, all in favor. Oh, we probably need to do a roll call.
We have to do, yeah, we have to do voice mode, sorry. So, Mr. Motion.
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia.
Yes.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0, thank you.
All right, moving on to our public hearings. We have item B1, MAJ 19-006, concept precise plan, site location 571 Embarcadero, and this, I think, is Cindy.
It is, thank you. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I do have a presentation, I'll pull it up right now. And here we go. This is a request for major modification to an existing conditional use permit. The location is 571 Embarcadero, and you can see it there on the screen. And the project before you, it is a commercial remodel, including a conversion of existing second-floor office space that is currently unused to be converted to one vacation rental unit. It also includes public coastal access improvements, replacement of damaged dock and gangway, and pilings to support the new public access and docks and gangways and related building facade improvements. The applicant is Rick Gambrell, and the agent is Kathy Novak Consulting. The project is located in the waterfront zoning district. It's in a planned development overlay and S4 treatment. The item before the Planning Commission is a conditional use permit approval. It is in the original jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission, so they would be required to get their coastal development permit from the Coastal Commission. And because it's in a planned development overlay zone, our zoning code requires a concept precise plan approval process. And what that means is that the Planning Commission will, should they vote to approve this project, they would be forwarding a favorable recommendation to the City Council for approval as a combined concept precise plan approval. And then the City Council would have the authority for the final CUP modification. And then, excuse me, a little detail on the proposed development. So as I said, this is a conversion of existing second-floor office space, and it would create one vacation rental unit and also convert a portion of the first-floor roof area to deck space for the rental unit guests, and then additionally install a vertical chairlift for ADA accessibility. And that would be located on the east side elevation, and I'll show you some elevations in a few slides here. The second component of the project is an extension of the existing Harbor Walk, which would pop out approximately 207 square feet. The southwest portion mostly of that existing Harbor Walk access, it would also widen the eight-and-a-half-foot access that's there currently, that runs from north to south, from eight-and-a-half feet to 10 feet. Number three, replace two damaged finger docks and realign an existing 20, well, previously existing 20-foot gangway to a 28-foot gangway that would be parallel with the Harbor Walk. A recent King Tide event damaged those existing docks that were there previously, and they were removed for emergency and safety reasons. To accommodate the extended finger docks, it would also include a 450-square-foot lease line amendment and replacement of two new pilings. The project also includes a request for approval of a master sign program, allowing a slight increase over what would be allowed pursuant to our standard sign ordinance. So our sign ordinance is based on linear building frontage. They would be allowed 67.5 square feet. They're requesting almost 74 square feet. To give you a little bit of background, so this project was actually, a very similar project was recommended by Planning Commission for approval to City Council in 2018, and the Planning Commission adopted Resolution 3918. It did not end up moving on to City Council, and it lingered for a while because the applicant encountered some building code challenges. And so now the project, slightly revised, is before you tonight. The key differences are that ADA lift, which was previously approved for the west side elevation, has been moved to the east side, to the street-side elevation, and it was previously two vacation rental units, so tonight's proposal is just one unit on the second floor. Planning Commission adopted five conditions, and I've summarized them here on the screen. They are that to remove the trash storage enclosure, to expose the brick facade, add signage for the public restroom, tone down the color of the directory sign, revise lighting fixtures. And this condition, the Planning Commission's reference was for particular lighting condition or lighting fixtures to be changed, and staff has included Planning Condition 13, which would require revised lighting fixtures. This is an item that is, has not been met yet by the applicant, and so you'll see that in Planning Condition 13. And then the last condition by Planning Commission was to provide a CASP ADA verification on that chairlift. Here is a, the next few slides I have will go through some of these site plan changes. So here is the existing first-floor site plan, and it does show the previous existing docks here in white, actually. And they do not currently exist because of the recent King Tide event that I mentioned. And you can see that there is an existing public dining deck on the west side. And this would be the proposed first-floor site plan. This area here in gray, you can see where my cursor is moving, represents the area, and then this area over here, which represents the 207-square-feet expansion. The existing second-floor plan, which shows the current office space, and then revised to show one ADA accessible vacation rental unit with two private deck spaces for that rental unit. And then here at the southeast corner of the building, it would be where the proposed ADA lift would be located. And then this slide here shows the existing and proposed street elevations. On the west, or, excuse me, on the right side of the screen, you can see here the brick veneer finish of the ADA lift, and then the base side elevations, which show the expanded Harbor Walk. I have some visual simulations that will show this a little bit clearer. Here is the existing visual sim, which reflects also the updated both coastal access signage and business signage. So here is the proposed visual simulation, and just, and then here is a zoomed-in version of what you can see that brick ADA lift would look like. And then on the base side, existing, and then here you'll see the Harbor Walk as it's expanded there. Right, currently, it kind of goes in a diagonal direction as it heads south towards the Gray's Inn. The proposal would widen it so there's a little bit more walking space. The applicant submitted color and materials and lighting information, and at the bottom of the screen are the lighting fixtures A through E, which are discussed in the staff report, and its figures B, C, and D here in the middle. That's staff's evaluation of the project, found that they weren't consistent with the Jim Moll architecture style. At the 2018 Planning Commission hearing, the Planning Commission felt strongly that they really wanted to see the plans revised so that it would expose all five of the brick columns along the street and really be consistent with that original architecture by this local architect. The sign program approval, as stated previously, they are requesting approximately 74 square feet in total signage for the building, and the conditional use permit process does allow for this process to request that additional signage along with the CUP approval. And it would also be consistent, their proposal tonight, with our draft sign ordinance, which has not yet been adopted, but it does require when there are multi-tenant commercial building spaces that master sign program approval be required, and that's what they are proposing here. In the downtown waterfront plan, it encourages projecting signs. The applicant's proposal would include a directory sign as well as individual projecting signs for each of the tenants on the first floor. The public access signs are proposed to be updated. They currently do not include the Morro Bay Harbor Walk branding, and here the sign on the left would show you what that would look like. This is consistent with the other lease sites on the waterfront. And then the directory sign, this was one of the conditions Planning Commission previously had. The original proposal was that this background color on this directory sign was white, and they requested that that be toned down. Applicant's proposal is now showing that with a beige color. Here are some images that show examples of those projecting signs for the commercial lease sites. This shows the existing signs to be approved. There's a collection of whimsical signs, if you will, throughout the property, including the ice cream signs and a variety of tenant spaces. For the development standards, the applicant's not requesting any exceptions. They're not proposing any increase in height, although it does not meet the existing view corridor requirements that would typically be required on new waterfront projects. This is an existing building that predates the waterfront master plan, so while it does have that narrow view corridor, the walkway to the bay of the west side of the building, they are proposing to remove the tables that line the view corridor currently, and so that should improve line of sight. For environmental review, the staff review of the project determined that it would be exempt under California Environmental Quality Act as a commercial remodel project. They are, have been conditioned to perform pre-construction eelgrass surveys and be consistent with Army Corps requirements and California environmental, or, excuse me, the Camp California Eelgrass Mitigation Plan, and those are reflected in Planning Conditions 7 through 10. So with that, staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission forward a favorable recommendation to the City Council to conditionally approve the project as reflected in, or by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 0721 for the project depicted on plans received March 12th, 2021. And that concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions. And I think you're muted, Susan. Excuse me, chairperson.
You're all right. It's okay, you can call me, Susan. Thank you. Before we get to questions, is there any expertise? I myself met onsite with Kathy Novak and had a little tour of the project. Anybody else?
Yeah, likewise, I met with Kathy.
Perfect, thank you. All right, and any questions for staff?
Yeah, I had just one question. The apartment that they're going to build is pretty good size. I was wondering, what would, any safeguards that it should only be vacation rental, short-term, as opposed to a permanent residency, you know, full-time? I wonder how we, how that might be assured. Does anybody have any ideas?
How would, so the question is, how would we ensure that it maintains, that it's utilized as a vacation rental?
Well, yeah, ensure is a too strong word. I'm just wondering how we, as a group, can get any kind of assurance? Is it just a matter of relying on the landlord that it won't be rented for anything over 30 days, or is there, you know, some sort of policing going on?
So, I mean, they would be required to get a vacation rental license from City Hall. Harbor Department manages those lease sites, so that's part of their lease management oversight functions, and that's, in short, really, how that ensures that it's not rented for periods longer than 30 days.
I think also, as part of the vacation rental ordinance, unless it got changed, if there is an under-reporting of revenues within the calendar year, aside from, say, a pandemic situation, they would lose their license. So that might be a safeguard as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think for this, for this particular project, you know, they're going to get their vacation rental license, and those are renewable every year, and so we can check in on these, you know, when they do the renewal process, and we check in on the amount of TOT that they report. And in fact, we have a service through those compliance where we can see the number of rentals that were posted for any given property in the city. And so we can match those to revenue totals, you know, as a kind of, you know, audit if we want to. These get a rough approximation, you know, it's not an actual audit, you know, we don't have folks coming in looking at their books, but we can see how often it's rented, and then we can compare that to the amount of DOT they're reporting. And it's, and if you're approving it as this, that's the use. They can't use it for anything else. So if they did, it would be a violation of the municipal code.
Any other questions for staff? No? Oh, Jen? Ms. Commissioner Ford?
That's okay. So my questions are, I don't know, maybe it's actually more for Kathy. They actually, they came up today for me. I went to get a last-minute coffee before we started this meeting, and I stopped by to see if Skipper's Brew was open, but they weren't. I forgot that they closed at 3:00. But I went there, and I couldn't get through the hallway because bikes were lined up through the hall and blocking my way through the hallway. And so I looked around, and I noticed there wasn't any type of bike parking or lockup at anything in that area, in that region. And so just as maybe something to just bring light to, I don't know that it necessarily has to be, you know, in the conditional use permit, but I think that it's something that's important for the builders to recognize that this could be an issue. And then the second thing is, even though I've been in this building so many times, the restroom, even though I know it's there, I happened to notice that today the Beach Burger's door was open, and it blocks almost the entire walkway to the restroom, and there's only about a two-foot walkway to that bathroom, and so it's not even visible unless you're looking for it and you peek your head through the hole and you can, you know, the opening and see that there's a bathroom there. I know it will be labeled, and, you know, people can find it, but it's not very accessible if that door is open. So those are just two observations that I had, above and beyond questions I've already asked staff, so just wanted to bring those up.
Thanks. There is a bike rack actually on the Harbor Walk, I believe, so, but, you know, that's a good point, maybe there needs to be one out on the sidewalk, some safe place for lockup. Okay, so I think we can open for public comment now, and I believe we do have Ms. Novak with her hand up. Anthony, can we have Kathy Novak join us?
Absolutely, Chair, let me go ahead. Okay, Kathy? You are unmuted.
Good evening, Vice Chair Stewart and Commissioners. My name is Kathy Novak, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant for the 571 Embarcadero Road Project, also known as the Salt Building. Before I begin, I'd like to thank staff for their time and assistance with this project and for the favorable recommendation for council. Staff has provided a detailed project overview, and I know a couple of you were on the commission previously, so I'll be brief with my comments and just go over a few items in a snippet of history. As staff mentioned, the previous project that was approved by the Planning Commission was for two retail units on the second floor, public access, and an ADA lift at the rear of the building, but it did not move forward to council. Unfortunately, the building code changed in the interim, and the new requirement was two units, two ADA accessible units on an accessible path. So this caused the applicant to reevaluate the project, and he put them on hold. Just recently, during one of the King Tide events, the gangway and floating docks suffered major damage, and the applicant was forced to remove all of this to prevent any further problems or damage to boats or other docks. After that event, the applicant decided to look at the vacation rental concept once again. It was decided that the ADA unit on the second floor would be the best option as trying to have two, as, excuse me, that would be the best option because two would have caused layout issues with the upstairs. So tonight, the project presented to you has one ADA unit on the second floor, the Harbor Walk extension, and the replacement of the floating docks and gangway. Before we submitted the project, we worked closely with staff on the location of the ADA lift. There are a couple of reasons for selecting this location. First, it makes better accessible sense from the ground level to the upstairs. Second, it significantly provides better protection from the elements. And I'll note here that the existing lift in the rear is only from the ground level to the Harbor Walk and is a constant maintenance problem since it's subject to salt air, windblown sand, and et cetera. Third, it will not interfere with any views from the neighboring Gray's Inn, as the first proposal did. Staff recommended that we, with this new lift that was on the Embarcadero side, that we figure out a facade that would blend in with the existing building architecture. So we presented two options to the commission for tonight, for the consideration. The first option is a brick facade that you can see in the simulation on your sheet, A5.1. The second option is a wood facade that you have, it's in your report, as Exhibit F. So we were asking the commission for your preferences to which facade you believe fits the existing building the best. Last item I want to share about the lift is that during the previous Planning Commission meeting, there was concern about the type of lift, and it was, if it was for commercial purposes. I believe that this discussion led to the added condition number 18 for the requirement of the CASP report. Since that time, we've looked closely at the ADA lifts and have had conversations with the building inspector, and we know that the lift as proposed tonight is a commercial lift and will meet the requirements. Additionally, the construction drawings, when done, will show any requirements for slopes or other items that will need to be done to meet the ADA standards. As such, I will ask you for a friendly amendment to the project conditions to delete number 18 and not require any special ADA reports. The balance of the project includes some notable components, which are, one, the new master sign program. The signs proposed tonight are the same as previously approved with one minor change having to do with the sign board color to beige. This is something that the commission requested at the time. For the other new commissioners, I'll just note that the sign program was designed in consultation with staff to meet the new standards that the city is wanting. Two, a 50-square-foot reduction of the storage area on the Embarcadero side, opening the area as the commission had requested. Three is a new gangway that has been realigned to a north-south orientation. This modification has now allowed the applicant to add a two-foot addition to the existing Harbor Walk along the windscreen area, which will make the accessway 10 feet, and a new 207-square-foot Harbor Walk extension on the southern side. Number four, furthermore, an eight-and-a-half-foot head float will be constructed to allow more space to walk around the gangway. Five, the finger docks will be lengthened by approximately 10 feet. Five, the finger docks will be lengthened by approximately 10 feet and repositioned so that the new overall design will provide a better slip configuration. And six, and last, the lease line will be adjusted by approximately 450 square feet to include the new floating dock footprint. There are additional project details, but since they are included in your staff report in Exhibits C and D, I don't think it's really necessary for me to cover them all. I would prefer to answer any specific questions you might have, rather than taking more presentation time. I do have one more request for the project conditions and a change, that is for Planning Commission, Condition Number 10. This will be on page 37 of your report. The condition is in regards to the eelgrass surveys. I'll be asking you to add the following language to the first sentence, quote, "Unless otherwise waived under the Army Corps permitting requirements," end quote. If the federal agencies, the federal agencies that administer the camp allow a waiver to, for a preconstruction eelgrass survey, since the area has had no reported eel grasses in the past 10 years, I would like the applicant to have the ability to forego the survey and not just be required by the city and no one else. This concludes my presentation, and I would like to say thanks to the applicant that has amended the project to include the previous Planning Commission comments the best he can while proposing a workable and constructable project. We believe this is all in keeping with the existing character of the building with minimal exterior modifications and no increase to height. It also meets the city goals, plans, and other policies. On behalf of Mr. Gambrell, I would like to respectfully ask the commission's recommendation for approval of this project as presented tonight. I do have Gene Doughty and Tom Jess with me on tonight's, Tom is the architectural person, and Gene was the one that did the dock design, so if you have any technical questions, we can get them on. I'd like to thank you for your time, and maybe I can just hit, Jen, on your comment on the bike parking. I guess my only concern is just, do we have enough room? There's the one bike that Susan mentioned on the Harbor Walk already, that's on the next-door lease site, but I'm not sure that it would be appropriate place. I know that the city's new LCP update, they're talking about not having any amenities within the 10-foot section, so this could be problematic, the way it's coming from your new LCP requirements. And then, toward the sidewalk, there's really not a whole lot of room. We do have that little section, but when we put the ADA lift in there, that's going to be, you know, reducing that space. And then, we go over toward the storage shed, and there's a ramp there, and there's gas meters, so I, I'm not really think of anything that we can do there, just because of the limited space. And the Beach Burger door, geez, I don't know what to say, you know, the door's got to swing a certain way for people to get in, and it's probably one of those original design flaws that somebody didn't really stop to think about, that when the door was open, you were going to block that area, and I, unless Tom, Jess has got any wild ideas, I'm not sure that there's anything we can do about that design. We will have that new public restroom sign up, so hopefully that will help too. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the commissioners may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Novak. Let's see if we have any other public comment on this item before we have Commissioner questions. I see Betty Winholz with her hand up.
Yes, Chair, I'm going to go ahead and unmute Betty right now.
Perfect.
Okay, Betty, you are unmuted.
Thank you, this is Betty Winholz. I just wanted to say with regard to the letter that I sent you this morning, that it was, in a sense, a reminder, because I felt what had happened on the previous project with regard to lifts or elevators was not necessarily serving the public, and that you were looking at the minimum legal requirements, rather than what would actually serve the people of Morro Bay, that I, I hope you know you're not limited to the minimum of what the law requires, but that you can do more than that. Whether that's about this lift, or eel grass, or whatever it is, I hope you know that you have a broad span of decision-making that's not limited to just legal requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winholz, and I see Sean Green also has a hand up.
Yes, Chair. Okay, Sean, I have unmuted you.
Thanks, Commission and staff, and the applicant as well, for bringing up some of the questions that I had already about this property. Just want to make a couple of quick comments. First off, just because Betty mentioned it, I think that the, that federal standards, historically in California, are lower than what we have here in California, so if there is a more local jurisdiction on the eel grass, that we should really defer to that. Second, I think, you know, from a public perspective, it would be nice, this is more of a general suggestion for staff, it would be great to receive a frequent update, whether it's annual, whether it's quarterly, on some of these waterfront projects. I know a lot of time was spent on this project back in 2018, and then it kind of disappears, and not much happens, and we don't really hear about it, so we just have kind of blind faith that something's happening, and then nothing happens, and then we have a meeting three years later. Some Kayakorizons, Off the Hook, the Aquarium Building, these would be great projects to hear, you know, an informal quarterly update, or something like that. Regarding the onsite bathroom, I would like to know from staff, is this a mandated public bathroom? And if it is, I know that, you know, when I recently walked by, it was out of order, as are 90% of the public bathrooms on the waterfront, probably not coincidentally, and that's certainly problematic. That goes, that, that transitions into some of the comments that I have about ongoing jurisdiction over, over waterfront leaseholders, keeping with the, the conditions of their CUPs. I have great confidence in Planning Commission making decisions upfront that, that best suit the public, but I don't have much confidence in the ongoing maintenance of those conditions. And so, whether that be obstacles in lateral and vertical accessways, whether that be a use of a property that's behind closed doors, and we don't ever see what's going in or out of that property, that also goes for, five-year audits are required as part of the Tidestones Trust for any property that is a percent gross property, which this one is. So, to my knowledge, that's not happening, I'm not sure whether it is or not. I do think that that's relevant when it comes to Planning Commission decisions, so if that is a requirement of the Tidestones Trust, it would seem to be relevant for that to come to staff, just to make sure that that is actually happening. I think that's all I wanted to say. Yeah, I think that's about it. Thank you very much, good luck in your debate.
Thanks, Mr. Green. I don't see anybody else with their hand up. Anthony, do you see anyone?
Thank you, Chair, no, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
All right, so let's bring it back to the commission. All right, any questions for the applicant or for staff at this point? Mr. Roshan?
So, a quick question for the applicant. Kathy, you're giving us an option on one brick, two wood. Does the architect have a preference in those options, and why?
Let me, if Tom Jess is on, I'll let Tom answer that question, see, was doing the building design.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, this is Tom Jess. Yeah, so, we did have a couple of options. One was the brick, which was what we initially proposed, and then, in thinking about it, we had those five brick columns out front that were kind of the, the statement pieces there, and we thought that maybe the, the wood would be downplayed a little bit more and not compete with the, the brick. So, that was the reason for the second alternative.
Do you have a preference, Tom?
My preference would be the wood, actually. It was brought up after the initial submittal, and we just feel like it's more in keeping with, keeping the, the strong rhythm that's there and staying in the language that was established by the original architect.
Thank you. Susan, that's my question.
Kathy, do either you or Tom want to address the lighting issue, and your concerns about choices for appropriate lighting that, that relates to its purpose in the areas? I know, Kathy, you had mentioned some things about that.
I'll let Tom jump on on that one, too, if he's still there.
I am, perfect. Yeah, so, so initially, we had trouble finding, because those are, those are kind of handcrafted lighting fixtures, which don't necessarily comply with the new energy requirements and the, some of the other requirements that have come on since this building was originally designed. So, what we thought about, and it's not reflected in the drawings, we kind of thought about it recently afterward, so what we, our initial thought was, we need to stick with a manufactured light fixture that we can get, that has photometrics, that has all the testing that's associated with it, that's required to comply with it. But one of the thoughts we thought, and that's why the conditions in there, we're not questioning the condition, is what we thought we would do is use the manufactured light fixture, but, but trim it out with some additional wood trim that matches those existing fixtures that are there. And we feel like we can work with staff and, and get that addressed, and comply with the condition, and the building will look better for it.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Not seeing anybody. Bill, you're muted, Bill.
There you go. I forgot, a couple of questions for staff. I think this might be the right time to ask Scott and Cindy. I was hoping you could speak a little bit to the issue on the elevator, because I'm concerned, I don't think commission has quite the leverage that Betty is suggesting in her letter. I'm wondering if you could inform us on that, and then, also, if you could talk a little bit about Sean's question, which sounds to me that it's about enforcement and maintenance, both on the horizontal access in the bathrooms. Could you address those two points?
Sure. So, as it relates to, you know, the ADA, that's, that's, you know, building code requirements, that's really not a realm that the Planning Commission should typically get involved with. You know, those are, those are code requirements, and there are very specific requirements to relate to the, you know, the project that Betty referred to in the affordable housing project over on Tascadero Road, that Betty referred to, and that not having an elevator, and then pointing out that this one has one, and we're requiring them to have one, well, that, the, the project on Tascadero Road is different in that it has accessibility on the lower floors, and doesn't need an elevator, and this one does not have accessibility to a unit on the lower floor. It has the unit upstairs, and has to have, then has to have a lift. But, you know, per, you know, Mr. Roshan's, you know, question, that's typically not something the Planning Commission, you know, gets involved with. I will say, you know, in more recent times, because one of the members of the Planning Commission, Jesse Barone, was a, a previous building inspector and then plans examiner, like, he oftentimes would bring up building code issues, just in kind of conjunction with projects and things, but that's not a typical thing Planning Commission usually, you know, weigh in on, because those are usually, you know, predicated on code analysis and code compliance. As for the, you know, the maintenance, you know, issue related to conditions and, and properties and, and access, those are all good points that Sean raises, and you've, you all seen, you know, the, the previous emails from Sean, you know, speaking to this issue. It's, you know, it's one that we certainly struggle with, we have a sort of lack of capacity on the code enforcement side of things. Our leases, you know, and policies do require the Harbor Department to conduct audits every five years, they also have a capacity issue and haven't been able to do that. I think the idea is now with the new lease policy that's been put together, is to start doing those audits. We do go out on enforcement when we get complaints, and we were doing, related to bathrooms previously, anyway, every time when it get into the busier season, we get complaints on those, and then code enforcement goes out, talks to folks. We've been trying to be a little more proactive as it relates to the bathrooms, that's a big issue down on the waterfront, especially when we're busy like this. And we started with Eric, Andersby, the Harbor Director, and he was, you know, because it's a requirement, you have to be compliant with the conditions of approval for your projects, leases that they all entered into say that they will, you know, comply with those things, and so, we started with Eric, and he's been having ongoing conversations over the last couple of weeks with our leaseholders, to varying degrees of success. The next step in this will likely be code enforcement, you know, getting involved and requiring those spaces to be open. If people don't open them, then there's a potential for citations to be issued and those types of things. We'd like not to go down that road, you know, with our business folks, we don't have to, but they do need to get, we do need to get the bathrooms open, especially with the amount of activity we have down there, and staff certainly realizes that, and we actually had a, you know, part of the, our Emergency Operations Center meeting today, we talked about that, you know, and what the status of that was, so certainly timely comments, and one that all of staff is, you know, paying attention to.
Yeah, thanks, Scott, and, and I want to thank Betty and Sean for the letters, and my opinion that this is important to the commission. Enforcement is always a tough issue, and wherever the commission can help, I think, I'll speak for myself, I'm interested, my guess is the commission is interested as well.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions? We'll check up here. Ms. Ford is quiet, okay. There were a few requests and, and concerns and issues that were brought up, so the eel grass condition was one of them. I know, in talking with Ms. Novak, she indicated that since this project has been ongoing, they have been monitoring the eel grass for a number of years now, and there hasn't been any in this location, partly because of the previous coverage of the Harbor Walk and the docks. How do other commissioners feel about her suggestion of the additional language that they would do, let's see, would be subject to the California Eel Grass mitigation policy, requiring the preconstruction survey be completed within 30 to 60 days unless it was waived under the Army Corps permitting requirements? Does anybody have an issue with that? Yes, Mr. Roshan?
I'm, I'm supportive of Kathy's request, unless I hear from Scott, otherwise. Any concerns, Scott?
I don't really have any concerns, the Army Corps is the resource agency that deals with the eel grass issues, and they're also going to have to go, there's another resource agency that they have to go to get permits from, and that's the Coastal Commission. And if the Coastal Commission is unhappy with that, they'll put the condition right back into it. It's not, it's not, like, well, but the condition's there, we enforce it, but it's, we're enforcing it for the resource agencies, basically, so I don't have a concern with it. I, you know, I sort of track what Ms. Novak is saying, and, and don't, if the resource agencies are okay with it, then I, I certainly don't have an issue.
Thanks. Let's see, the sign program, of course, would be one where they're asking for additional square footage, but it, it appears to me to be appropriately done. So, does anybody have any concerns with that? No? Okay. Just double-check y'all here. Okay. And then, the lighting fixtures. So, type of lighting fixtures to be submitted to Planning Division for review, the whole existing lighting fixtures shall be revised to be consistent with the Jim Mal architectural style, and, and I'm very comfortable with their response, that the lighting fixtures need to be appropriate to the current technology and those requirements, but that they would trim them out to kind of reflect that style. Does anybody have any other concerns or issues with that?
Staff is also happy to work with them in that manner, that seemed a very reasonable suggestion to me.
Absolutely.
I do want to pause right there, and we had the issue related to the, you know, the bathroom and the door. I, I think maybe if the commission's okay with it, I'm, I'm happy, you know, for Cindy and I to work with the applicant, to maybe move the bathroom sign, so we can have, or have another one that's next to that location, you know, so that, if that happens, then you would still have a sign that's right there, that tells you that the bathroom's there, and that's not what I think is shown on the sign plan, so maybe we could add a sign that does that, at least, you know, addresses the issue that was raised, and I think that is an issue, so that might be a resolution.
That seems good. I remember going there when it was the Hoffbrau, years and years ago, and that bathroom was always hidden, but I think the Hoffbrau was a locals' place, and the locals knew where the bathroom was, so they knew how to get behind that door. But it's just, I think, you know, the architect's right, it's, it's one of those structural things that was perhaps not fully thought through when it was first built. Let's see, the CASP certification, or verification, is that something that we can eliminate from the conditions?
If the commission's happy with that, I'm fine with it, with the, we're removing the condition, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
We've already reviewed it and looked at the, the lift that they're proposing, and we're comfortable that it's compliant.
Yeah, it seems logical. Yeah, it seems logical to me not to put extra conditions that just make more work. Okay. Anything that I missed?
Did you get the ADA survey? Are we good? Is that what you were bringing up?
That was the, yeah, the certified access special. Yeah, yeah. Oh, any other feelings? I would agree with Commissioner Roshan on, and the architect, on wood over brick on the surfacing on the lift. I think that would sort of cause that to recede a little. But anybody else who has a strong opinion, I'm happy to hear?
No, that's, that's not my opinion exactly. I would prefer the wood to be more keeping.
Excellent. And I see Jen nodding. Okay.
You know, I do, I do have, you know, one thought in terms of the major, let's see, self-policing of the areas. You know, I'm sensitive to the fact that, you know, budget constraints in the community development office. You know, it wouldn't be out of the ordinary, you know, for planning commissioners to, on some sort of regular basis, stroll through the Embarcadero. I mean, I certainly don't have any expertise, but I can tell when there are chairs in a walkway that shouldn't be there, or if it looks to me like there's too many signs, or the bathroom doesn't work. And maybe that's all it takes to encourage the major esses to do a better job of keeping those things clear. Because, you know, I sympathize with the actual business operators because, you know, if you're trying to observe the fine points of a lease with respect to this, and your neighbor isn't, then to some degree you feel, you know, foolish for observing the letter of the lease. And you'd sort of like to reward them for observing the lease rather than, you know, rewarding those who aren't quite so scupless. I just sort of throw it out there. You know, it might be, there might be some legal prohibitions against it, but I don't think there'd be that much more onerous for, for these planning commissioners just once in a while to stroll the area and keep an eye on things.
I think it may be a new, or an additional challenge at this point because the pandemic allowed quite an excess of outdoor dining and seating and tables. And it was necessary and important. And I think it's actually, in many areas, created just the kind of ambiance that we really had been seeking. And yet, it has, in some areas, created quite a clutter. I will also say, even on my sidewalk, there are times when a family group or a crowd will come through on bicycles. And they leave all the bicycles, you know, sprawled across the sidewalk. And so that's not entirely a business owners or operators challenge, it's just sort of a specific use thing that does happen. The bathroom issue, I would say, just from the business perspective, may relate to the pandemic as well. I think there are a lot of business owners who have been tasked with keeping bathrooms clean and stocked. And there's a certain amount of fear that's gone, has gone along with that and not really knowing how to keep their employees safe if they are required to go in and do that cleaning and restocking. So perhaps a little more support and education in those areas could be helpful for them. Because we need restrooms.
Well, I would also note that it's likely coming out of the next budgetary process. And if we get the short-term rental ordinance approved, we'll be adding code enforcement staff that could help with this. So that will be coming down the pipeline and a little ways down the road. Not really super useful now, though. And we need it right now. So I'm just pointing that out.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So do we have any other discussion, concerns?
Can I get a clarification?
Yes.
So would, am I hearing that perhaps you might want to revise condition 15 regarding the restroom so that instead of saying add signage for onsite public restroom, it would read add signage for onsite public restroom and relocate sign to improve visibility or something like that?
That sounds good. Yeah. And then you got that we felt we could eliminate 18.
Yeah.
And I don't know if 13 really needs to be revised about the lighting. Because I think if, if they put in appropriate lighting fixtures, but trim them to be consistent with the gym mall style, that sort of answers that.
Right, yeah. And we're happy to work with the architect. And right now, it kind of gives them a little bit of leeway on exactly how they're going to trim that out. So.
And then, did you get the wording on number 10 for the eel grass?
Yes, we got that.
All right. Anything else? So can we get a motion?
Susan, real quick?
Yes.
On that signage for the bathroom, would it hurt to make it that pub style also, like all the other signage that's going in? So it's really visible for people to see as they're looking down the hall, you know, seeing that public restroom, just to be in uniform with all the signage that they're proposing, that they're putting on the hall? Just a suggestion.
I like it. I don't know what staff thinks.
I do.
I think that's a good idea.
I love pub signs. Okay. That sounds good. All right. Anybody got a motion? All right, Mr. Roshan, Commissioner Roshan.
As the sun sets in beautiful Moro Bay behind me, I would like to recommend approval per staff's recommendations with the adjustments that Kathy mentioned, the three on the ADA, the sign increase, the grass, and looking for the wood option. And finally, staff will work with the applicant on the bathroom sign.
Resolution number?
Hmm, this is case number MAJ19006.
And PC07, let's see, yeah. Okay, we got it, 21. And is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. All right, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Graffia.
Yes.
Commissioner Roshan.
Yes.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Stewart.
It's a mouthful. Yes.
Vice Chairperson Stewart.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0.
All right. Moving along. New business. Discussion and assignment of a replacement for Jesse Barone on the Planning Commission Development Review Subcommittee. The city is committed to undertaking evaluation of its development review process with the intent to improve and streamline the process. The subcommittee may participate in a larger stakeholder group that will be formed for the same purpose. There is no staff report. Scott, have you got any other comments on that?
No, as we're all aware, you know, this was to be Jesse's last meeting. Apparently, the last meeting was his last meeting. And he, if you all recall, last time I brought this item forward, the subcommittee was comprised of Commissioner Roshan and Commissioner Barone. So I am shy one person. We haven't actually started the work yet. I've been a little busy with GPLCP stuff, but do plan on jumping right in, coming within the next probably week or so. I'm going to work with the subcommittee to set a meeting, probably have a meeting or two, and then form the larger, you know, stakeholder group with the committee as part of that. And that stakeholder group would probably consist of folks that submit applications across our front counter. So the folks that interact with us regularly are folks that have a lot of experience with that, you know, to help, you know, us work through, you know, what improvements we can be, that can be made. So that's kind of the idea. I envision, you know, again, maybe a meeting or two, just with the subcommittee and myself. And then, and then when we form the larger sort of stakeholder group, probably three or four meetings with them. And then we'll have the, you know, the results of that come out. And that's what we would move forward to go and implement. That's kind of the way I have it framed in my head. That's subject to, you know, revision once I get to sit down with the subcommittee and talk with them, because I'm not making the decisions for everybody. I want to, you know, bring everybody in and see what they have to say. So I need another volunteer, I guess is what I'm asking for.
All right. I see you all jumping up and down and really excited. Joe, yes. Joe for the win.
I, you know, I'm retired and I have time. I'm certainly willing to do it. If someone else has a conclusion, you really want to do it, fine, I'll defer, but I'm available.
Hey, Joe, it's really got to be fun. They all missed the chance.
Thank you, Joe.
Ah, well, I guess I appreciate it, Commissioner Graffia.
Thank you. And we didn't need to open that for public comment, did we?
Well, it's a business item on the agenda, I suppose.
Yeah, let's see. Anthony, is anybody, I don't see anybody raising their hand on that, jumping up and down.
That was, I'm, I'm jumping up and down right now. I'm joking.
Anthony wants to do it. Yay!
Currently. What I meant by that is I was doing jumping jacks. So.
Actually jumping.
Keep the blood going, Anthony. Stay awake.
All right. No raised hands in the queue. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right. Moving on. Unfinished business. Well, it's all kind of unfinished, or at least a lot of it. When is, well, I suppose that would be comments and future agenda items. When is city council looking at the general plan?
Well, that is a good question, Vice Chair Stewart. They are going to start their review at their second meeting in April, which is the 27th. It looks like they're going to take a little deeper dive into it than they initially had planned. And I think we're scheduling it out for three meetings. So hopefully they're consecutive. So that would be the 27th, 11th, and 25th, assuming we need all three. And we'll probably be biting off chunks because the city council has a lot of items on their agenda that they have to get through. And we can't just sit there and blow through it all night like the planning commission was able to. You know, so, so it's looking like probably a three-meeting process that we're looking at right now.
Okay. All right. Other comments and suggestions for future agenda items. I see Joe and, excuse me, Ms. Chair, Commissioner Graffia and Commissioner Roshan. Let's get Commissioner Graffia.
You know, you know, per the business owners before us today, I had an interesting conversation with Kathy when we were talking in general terms about the eel grass situation in the back bay. And it's another dramatic die-off a few years ago, and now it's coming back. And the conclusion that there doesn't seem to be definitive study as to why that happened and why it's coming back now. And she mentioned that one of the cities down south, I'm not sure if it was Pismo, it was very expensive. And, you know, I wonder if we could suggest to the city council that we put together some kind of a volunteer subcommittee, you know, that might include somebody who has experience in writing the grants, maybe enlist somebody from the Cal Poly who has some expertise in eel grass, and somebody from elected official in a small group. And maybe we could get this kind of a study done at a much reduced rate or the use of federal monies. It strikes me that the federal government has an interest in keeping the bay healthy and alive. And then, you know, the, these, the concerns about, you know, the die-off of eel grass around the Embarcadero could be addressed in terms of those in lieu fees. And perhaps this study could tell us, you know, where and what to do with this in lieu money to keep eel grass alive in places where it can actually do some good in terms of keeping the bay clean. Just a thought.
That is one of the implementation items, or at least right in line with one of the implementation items in the draft GPLCP.
Yeah. I guess the only thing I'm adding is, I was hoping we, you know, we're probably never going to have, you know, a bundle of money that we can easily afford to spend on. And I wonder if we could investigate sort of doing it on the cheap and still achieving most of what we wanted to achieve.
You know, that's a good point, Commissioner Graffia. That might be interesting to have Lexi from National Estuary Program come and give you a little presentation on eel grass in the bay and what they've done to date and what they found. Or at least somebody from the NEP is not to be Lexi necessarily. But I'd be happy to reach out and see if she, we could set that up so we could have a conversation like that. I think that'd probably be fairly illuminating to the commission.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
I see heads nodding, so I'll see if I can reach out and work something out there.
Great, thank you.
That's like step one in the process, I guess.
Commissioner Roshan?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. I'd want to follow Joe's lead. A couple of meetings ago, I talked about doing an information session on trees and planting in for Moro Bay. And I've asked for some recommendations. And Betty Winholz actually suggested I contact Hope Merkel at Los Osos Nursery. Her family has run that nursery for 45 years. She's been very involved the whole time. Wonderful person. Anyway, she's agreed to help us organize a panel. It would involve her, Hope Merkel, Lindsay Best, and they recommended Mike Bush and John Chestnut. These are all local people, all naturalists. They would, each one would sort of give us 10 minutes on a different kind of topic around, around planting and trees, and what seems to be most appropriate for Moro Bay. And it would be just an introduction to the commission as a way to look at these issues. I was going to suggest that we might structure this 10 minutes each for the four speakers, 15 minutes of questions, that would give us a 55-minute information session. And I did talk with Scott, and it does look like if we're all in favor, we could do this on May 4th. We could get that on the agenda.
Got a nod from me.
Thank you all very much. I'll circulate bios on the four speakers. And Scott, if we could get that on the agenda, it sounds great. I have one more thing I wanted to get on the public record, is that I'm very interested, and I think other commissioners might be too, of tour of Vistra. And I really want to go on that the commission is asking for that. We don't want it to just wait. We understand the complexity of what's going on, but I think there's a certain urgency that we begin to inform ourselves. And I think it should start with the tour.
Very much in favor of that.
Me too.
Looks like you got.
That's all good. We'll be talking with Vistra, I think, next week. So we'll certainly let them know as part of our kickoff for the environmental work for the battery project. They were planning on doing that anyway, by the way, for those of you that didn't know that.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. I actually have a question regarding, you know, I sit up in my office and I, and I look at the Embarcadero every day. And I've noticed that our shipments from trucks to restaurants and stores and whatnot happen to usually drop off right in the middle of like rush hour for lunch and for dinner and for breakfast and all those really unfortunate times, blocking traffic. We don't have bike lanes, obviously, so we have bicyclists and trying to navigate through and traffic coming both ways in one lane. And it's a bit of a mess. And so until we, you know, redo the Embarcadero, if we do eventually redo the Embarcadero, is there a way, I know that there's other cities that have limit, limitations on delivery times. And I don't know if that's something that the planning commission can even be involved in. But I think that it is definitely something that could lessen the crazy hecticness that occurs down there during this peak times.
So, yes, that happens regularly to drive in the opposite lane, opposing lane of traffic to get around the trucks. We actually have a plan in my office, it's over there, that, you know, puts truck delivery spaces in areas where parking spaces are, allowing the Embarcadero to address that issue. Though there is some angst among the business owners down the waterfront about removing parking spaces, which I understand. And the other piece of that is, we have had, you know, conversations with the food vendors that bring food to our restaurants. And apparently, we're little fish in the sea. And the folks that get to dictate that are the cities that already have those limitations in place. And they get deliveries before we do. And one of those is City of San Luis and a couple of others, I guess. And so we've not had much success. We've run down this track a few times and really got nowhere with it. Which is why we came up with a plan to have loading, you know, truck loading and unloading spaces down there to avoid this. But obviously, we haven't been forward with that either, much because there has been some, there was some pushback when we did it. But the plan that includes that was adopted by council, it's approved by council. I think certainly things for future discussions, I guess, is what it is.
I do think it's a challenge because we're sort of at the end of the line, too, in terms of deliveries. They're going to come up from, most of them up from LA, delivering along their way. And some of our businesses open later, too. So it's been an issue, and it has been discussed in the business forums as well, so.
Okay, and then my, one follow-up to that also would be, I noticed that we don't have bicycle, you know, like sharing bicycles, spray painted on, I don't know that exact term, but in the lanes that basically notify motorists that you're sharing this lane with cyclists. And I don't know if that's something that, you know, we could add or just make people more, especially tourists, more aware that we don't have a bicycle lane that is, you know. I mean, I'm watching cyclists all the time, you know, bumping through traffic or using our sidewalks, which is also an issue. So just anything that just makes people more aware, I think, can help. I don't, I, hopefully, we haven't had a lot of incidences of cyclists being hit, but just, you know, I'd like to prevent that from happening in the future, so.
Yeah, we haven't had many, you know, we do have shareos throughout town. So are there specific areas where you're, you were looking to have them or just in general?
Well, in general, but I think also on the Embarcadero, at least between, gosh, I'm trying to think of the streets that I'm looking at here. Is it Harbor and Marina, I think it is? But there's, I don't see any markings in the lanes, you know, and I'm talking about the ones that like show the bicycle and like the arrow, like you're sharing this lane with cyclists.
The shareo?
It's a shareo, yeah. I'm certainly happy to talk with our city engineer on it, though. I'll ask them about it. I don't know what, I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know what, I mean, we have them in different places around town, and I don't really know how those locations were chosen versus others. I don't, I don't know how that was done. So I'll at least go find out for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Anything else? I want to put out there real quick. I listened to a really great podcast on roundabouts. It was Freakonomics.com/podcast/roundabouts. I would recommend everybody in Moro Bay and on this commission take a listen to it. Like many of the Freakonomics radio stuff, it's interesting and very accessible. But also some great statistics, information, background, history on both safety and environmental issues regarding roundabouts. And since we may be looking at one eventually going in, at least one at 41 Main Street, I think the public could maybe get more of a feeling of comfort about it or at least help them develop their opinions with more of an educated background about it. And perhaps that's something I can send to Scott, and he can share around. But it, I did share it with another business group I'm in, and Janice Peters, who of course was instrumental in getting our current roundabout, said, I wish I had had this information, you know, when she was fighting for that for a good four or five or six years, so. I would recommend that. And I'm sure there's lots more, but I think we can probably move on to Community Development Director comments.
Yeah, so at our next meeting, you know, we're going to have the election of officers. We need to, you know, have a new for chair and vice chair with the Jessis leaving. We're hopefully opening up the recruitment to replace them. I thought that was going to happen already, but it hasn't yet. So hopefully, it's coming out soon. That's done by the City Clerk's office, not my department. You do have, coming before you, the next meeting is going to be the Appeal for 2460 Main. That's the Supportive Care Project that's generated a lot of interest in the city. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, that is coming. And they're probably going to give some thoughts, you know, how we manage the meeting, you know, on Zoom. And probably make sure we use the.
Timer?
The timer that I have, that I can, that I can share my screen on so you can, we can see it and, you know, and we'll have the notification for the, for public comment on there. So we'll keep that up with the timer, kind of like council does at the meeting and for that entire comment period, just so that it's there for everybody and that the timer's there and everyone in the meeting can see it. And I'm going to bring forward the previous feature agenda item. I think I mentioned this to you maybe previously, but the review of the Moro Bay Elementary School Special Use Permit. I, you know, was able to get in contact with the school district. Ryan Pinkerton, you know, forwarded me the plan that really is just a list of uses they have out there and kind of a, you know, a site plan that shows where they're at, kind of color-coded, sort of. And so I'll bring that forward to you. And based on the, I was going to bring it at the last meeting and then realized too late that the requirement of the ordinance is that the review has to be a public hearing. To say you have, we go overboard in the review of the uses that are out there is an understatement, but. So I have noticed it sent to the paper today, so you'll have it. So we'll be reviewing that at the next meeting, and you can see the uses. I don't imagine it'd be a real long item. There's not a bunch of uses out there, so. But certainly, conversation worth having since we're supposed to review it biannually, and we've never reviewed it since it was issued many years ago, so.
Scott, do you get the sense that the school district is planning to come before the city, whether the commission, council, the general public at any point, to discuss their project and their plans?
So we've sat down with them a couple of different times. You know, they're, they're just like we are, right? You know, they're, they're a public agency. So anything that they do is out in the, is out for public consumption. So when you sit down with the school board and the, and staff goes, well, do you want us to look at other uses for this, for the school site? And the school board says yes, well, then you go off and go do that. And then you have to bring it back to them and show it to them before you really show it to anybody else. Because the school district then has to say, yeah, we're interested in that, or no, that's not, that doesn't make any sense, you know? You know, you don't just randomly run out and show it to the community, get them all wound up about something that the district hasn't told you, the school board hasn't told you to go do. So that's kind of what they found themselves in, you know, it's kind of a little bit of a catch-22. You know, you really would rather be out in front of it, talking with the community, but they really couldn't do that because they didn't have any direction other than like, hey, bring back some information to the, to the school board, which is what they did, and everybody picked it up and was like, oh, my God, this is crazy, or this is a good project, or it's not, whatever. And so, you know, they've, they got to a point where they were getting ready to start looking at all this. They said, they came in, sat down, met with myself, met with the city manager. You know, we kind of went through, you know, what they were doing, what they were looking at, and then COVID hit. Literally, that was one of the last meetings, I think, we had in the conference room in the city, at City Hall. And so they've, you know, they've been focused on trying to get their schools open. I mean, literally, that's been the plan and, you know, how they go about doing that. They just don't have enough capacity to do everything at once, so. They haven't come back. I would imagine, you know, once everything's kind of calmed down a little bit, they will. Because they did get the direction to sort of move it to the next step. And that would be engagement, and that's what we told them we needed, was you need to come and engage the community now. And, you know, that's when they kind of gave us the, you know, the speech that I gave you is that, you know, we're kind of stuck. We apologize that we got people wound up. We didn't mean to. But we really had to get direction for the board before we could do anything, so.
Great, okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, then it looks like we are ready to adjourn this meeting at 7:18. Our next meeting will be April 20th at 6:00 p.m. And until further notice, it's still via teleconference. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chair Stewart. Very good meeting.
Thank you all.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.